Call the meeting to order. Certified compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Haven. Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Schofield is absent. And councilmember Weizenberg.
Here.
I will present.
Next, we have the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's adopted. Next, we move on to public comments. Are there any public comments? Very none, in those scheduled appearances. The consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. All we have on there are minutes from the regular city council meeting from September 28, 2022, and the special council meeting from September 20, 2022. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve. Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we are approved. Next, we move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. I'm assuming we'll get this out to everybody here. It gets a little bit closer. We did get contacted by QuickTrip. And again, their opening date is December 1st. There are also, two weeks later, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting type ceremony. And we'll make sure everybody's aware of that and get that information out. And it's interesting because they're opening on a Thursday? December 1st. By the way, all QuickTrips open on Thursday, I found out today. Somebody told me that. I never knew that. They always have the grand opening something on Thursday. That's what I was told today. I'll have to see if the, at least it holds up here. As you know, we didn't take any action on the swimming pool. As the funding, we all gave that information, did not come through. So again, the bids that we had obviously lapsed. They had to be approved by the night of the month. And so obviously, since we didn't approve any of them, they just, they lapsed. As far as moving forward with that, having some internal conversations over the next few weeks with some staff and so on. What, the other thing I'm, that I've instructed the city administrator to do then is to speak with our engineering firm. Let's get some idea of the lay of the land. And then, of course, we'll be planning a meeting on the fundraising end. And then, of course, put together a plan where we want to go. We're in a situation where we're looking at if we're doing a rebid type thing, it'll be after the 1st of the year. And I don't know if you guys have thought about it, that'd be sometime, I'm assuming that we're talking late winter, early spring, with the idea that we would come around. Because again, as we know, building pretty much anything in 2023 is, it's not going to be an option that we're going to have to shoot for the summer of 2024. And it's just a fact of life, based on the companies. Now, if there was a big, huge shift in the economy and something would make things different, but I think the timing is still going to be, at the best, we're going to do is the summer of 2024. But as I said, having some internal conversations, going to work on to some planning, talking to the engineering firms between U.S. Aquatics and Cedar Corp. And then, of course, we'll have some meetings and then also talk about continuing fundraising and where we're going to be. So the, and again, with my hope of having an idea, of having a plan together by the end of the calendar year, going into the late winter and spring of 2023. Just a reminder, of course, everybody going to the LEED conference next week. We handed out everything, including the tax exempt, if you can get into the hotel and those types of things. The folks that are going, the one thing I always request is that we sort of spread out when we get to the sessions, have everybody, not everybody sit in the same line. Sometimes, we have staff that goes, of course, they have certain things that really fit their position, that we try to do that. But as we try to get around and hit as many different sessions as possible in everything that the Wisconsin League of Municipality offers at their annual conference. Also, I want to quickly say, because this came up during the last city council meeting, I want to thank everybody for their concern with my mother living in Sarasota with the hurricane. As most of y'all know, she, things came out fine for her. And there was some damage there. But of course, you know, and we obviously, our thoughts are for those people about an hour south of where she's at, down in, down in the Fort Myers area that really got hit bad, and so on. My mother lives in a housing development with about 600 houses, and about 180 of them were damaged in one fashion or another. About 30 of them lost carports and those types of things. But as far as anybody injured, anybody hurt, none of that up where she was at. But again, I do thank everybody from the city who showed concern for, during that period of time. Any questions? Very none? Move on to administrator's report. Administrator Asmussen.
Thank you very quick here as well. Just a couple of things, as I bring up every time, it's all budget all the time at the moment. We met to a public safety tonight. We met at Public Works last week, so a good chunk of the budget is done, recommended to the finance committee for ultimately final recommendation to the city council. Again, our public hearing will be on the number of any shoulder. The SIG Wednesday, the 16th, is what we're shooting for. In order to comply and get things in the paper, just a reminder for those of you on the finance committee, we will be almost have a forced meeting on Monday, the 24th, because it'll have the recommendation that I'll have to get in the paper on Tuesday. So we have our 14-day, or 15-day plus notice in the paper prior to our public hearing on the 16th. So again, those of you on finance will be meeting on Monday, the 24th, at 5:00-ish. So please check your calendars and hopefully that works for everyone. Mayor mentioned, there are two, a couple of things in this before he mentioned the LEED reports and also the pool issue. Typically, I think there's typically been two vendors for pools at, at the LEED meetings. I would see maybe the center. I encourage everyone to ask questions, whether you have a pool vendors and what else, you know, they're seeing out there and any of the vendors for that matter. As, as you say, at Public Works, obviously Matt was talking again about the loader and the plow issue and some of his equipment, the skater equipment. You're going to see vendors of all types there and then please, you know, take that opportunity to ask questions. And again, I like to think that staff does a great job and Matt did a great job last week explaining these things. But again, you know, feel free to ask them as well and what other committees are doing and things of that nature for those of you that are going to the conference. So did note to the public works committee that we did apply for the tree grant, the urban forestry grant, that we got that in and we hope to hear, it sounded like within probably about a month or that we would hear. You know, the thing I think as we noted at Public Works was, they, it sounded like they extended the deadline for the beginning, the beginning grant or the new, new grant period. I'd like to think that that, that helps us in the standpoint that they must not have gotten a lot of applicants in for the grant. So those of us that did get it in on time and everything else should, I'm hoping that bodes well. And again, in talking to the DNR representative, it did sound like, especially as a new, a newer community that hadn't had one of these types of grants in decades, that our chances were pretty good. So keep posted on that. Yeah, I'll talk about, you know, again, the future, some other future meetings when we get to that point of the meeting. But the only other thing I wanted to do at this point was turn, turn part of my report over to Angie to talk about absentee voting a little bit. That's obviously a big thing coming up now and there's been some changes. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Angie.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick dates that are approaching quickly that I know everybody will be interested in. Right now, you can request a mail-in ballot that can be sent in at any time and we will get that mailed out to you. There's a $48 turnaround. We have to have it turned out within 15 hours. We generally have it out the same day or very next day. October 25th is the first day that you can do absentee voting in the office. So if you want to do that, you can come in anytime after the 25th through November 4th and vote in person absentee. The last day that you can request an absentee ballot to be mailed out to you is November 3rd. And then, the last day to actually vote in the office is November 4th. Then, October 19th through November 4th is a late registration. So if you need to register, you can still do it in our office from November, or October 19th through November 4th. And you can also register on Election Day. But if you want to take care of it ahead of time, you can still do that. If you have any questions, let me know.
Quick question. If you, say you, I've had a couple of people ask, if they changed locations from township into the city or vice versa, what form do they just need? A utility bill and a photo ID or what do they need?
They need something, a photo ID would just prove, they don't have to have their new address on it. If they do, it's great, that covers everything. If they still have the driver's license and have not changed it, they can just bring in a utility bill with their address on it. Or a bank statement or whatnot with their new address. And then just show the photo ID, just basically say you are who you say you are. Good question.
Any other questions for the city clerk? It's always good to get updates on how things are going and obviously we know there's been changes, so we try to keep up on those things. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anything else for either the clerk or the administrator? And again, especially on the elections, if somebody has any, tell them to call City Hall. Be happy to get them the information for their particular situation. And we'll do that, so. Okay. Next, move on. Update and explanation of the 2023 Budget Process Debt Service. So what I did was last week, or last meeting, excuse me, city administrator did a quick, as we would call it, budget.
I knew that was coming.
Well, it took a long year. Budget 101 type of thing. Now, this isn't going to last as long.
No, we're not.
But the other thing, a few days after the meeting, as I was going, about, obviously talking about debt, city debt, how it works. So, and again, so we're probably, are we talking five minutes?
Yes.
About a five-minute thing. Just explaining about two things. First of all, city debt, how it works, and then also where the standing. Now, I know the last meeting you did put up where we, where we were, but again, just sort of mentioning that, but more the workings of how city debt works.
Just touching on a couple of things that the mayor filmed that I maybe glossed over just a little bit. And we'll be, you know, when we get to the final budget hearing, we'll be looking at that schedule again, debt, because it's, it is a big deal. And when we make the decisions, especially for some of Matt's projects that were discussed at Public Works last, last week, that'd be a big deal. But basically, you know, one thing, just wanted to clarify is, so we're talking about what we borrow for. Basically, these are long-term assets, whether we're talking about fire vehicles and some of Matt's, you know, larger vehicles, dump trucks, and then the large street projects. There's just no way that we can make them work by putting them on the levy or, or, you know, operationally. So typically, we have to borrow for those items. But we can only borrow for those long-term type assets. We cannot borrow, for example, to hire another police officer. You know, that's, it's frankly illegal in the state of Wisconsin and most other places to borrow for operational uses, especially when it comes to employee salaries and things of that nature. So again, the debt never can be used for that. And so you won't ever hear, you know, us discuss those things. It's just for the long-term assets that last, you know, five-plus years. As we talked a little bit tonight, even at Public Safety, at this point, we're not even borrowing to buy police cars, for example. I worked in a number of municipalities that just routinely, you know, they buy a bunch of police cars at a given year that they borrow. At this point, we are not borrowing for those, but we could. Again, when we're talking about a three- or four-year lifespan that we get on, you're really close to that border of, and clearly, I would never recommend that we borrow 10 years for squad car that lasts three years. So that's just kind of a quick, quick summary of the things that we can borrow for. And then secondarily, we've kind of glossed over the different types of debt that we have. For those of you that were around last year when we went full out through, I'm going to call it like a full-blown bond sale on the market, on the open market for the work that we did on Dryer Laneville on Third Avenue. You know, basically, we worked with ailers and associates to basically solicit those bids nationwide. And we get bids from banks all over the country that want to buy those bonds and then resell them to investors. And so that's, you know, for large projects, that's typically the most equitable way to do it. Yes, we pay, you know, significant money for ailers and, and for, basically, we typically have a bond rating agency, Moody's, that has to rate the city's finances and things of that nature. So although it's, it's an expensive way to borrow, but typically, we get really good rates. So especially on, on a, on a large-term project like that, that's the route we would go. We also have, a lot of municipalities use our state, our local state trust fund, which is, you know, frankly, a simple way to borrow money. The city has done that on, probably close to a, probably a dozen over, over the years. So basically, it's a state agency that loans monies just to municipalities, again, for capital projects. That typically is a two-to-three-month process where we pass a resolution and ultimately, you know, we'll borrow for, I'll call it smaller-term items. For vehicles, things of that nature. You know, frankly, when we're talking about some of Matt's, Matt's loader here coming up and, and then the borrowing for QuickTrip, that's probably the route we'll go. It's easy, it's pretty straightforward as far as getting our money. The only downside is the, the rates tend to be just a little bit higher at that level. But again, for us to go out and borrow, you know, $400,000, $500,000 for, on the open market, we're paying ailers and everyone else probably close to 40, 50. So then it's not real economical either. So, so that's the route that the city has taken as well. Thirdly, and we did, we touched on, you know, we could, we could borrow one of our local financial institutions, especially for a shorter term and a smaller amount. I know municipalities do that. One place where, you see this more in school districts, they have what they call like the tax anticipation note, if they have, if the entity has cash flow problems, so, boy, we can't just quite get to the end of the year before the tax bills go out, that we need a short-term loan. A lot of, a lot of municipalities, and again, primarily school districts have done that. And again, that's typically just with a local lending institution. And again, all three of those that I just talked about count against that levy limit, that 5% of your total equalized valuation. The one, the final one that we touched on just a little bit, I think, is revenue bonds. So basically, the utilities, which are revenue-related, you can borrow, again, through, against the utility for those type of projects, water, sewer and stormwater. Typically, those rates are a little higher as well. The plus side of a revenue bond, though, is it's exempt from that levy limitation because really what that levy limitation is, whether you're going to the state trust fund loan or on the bond market or again, the local bank, you're guaranteeing the city's tax, taxing ability to repay that debt. So at the end of the day, that's the safest bet for anyone that wants to invest in what the city's selling or what the city bond is. Because again, at the end of the day, as you heard me say, there's no levy limitation for debt on, for putting on the debt service. So ultimately, they're always going to get paid back. Now, the revenue side, though, that's pledged against the utility. So if the utility would ever have any issues, or you get to a point where the utility isn't bringing in enough revenue to make those payments, you know, that's a little more problematic. But ultimately, it doesn't go on the tax levy. So that's typically, though, they're a little riskier, so that's why the rates are higher. So we try to avoid those when we can, but in some cases, I mean, I'd be very honest, you know, as we talked about a little bit of Public Works last week, if we got in a situation where we'd have to replace the sewer plant in our next review or our next permit application, if we were to have to go forward, typically, that's, you know, we'd have to go that route. Because again, we wouldn't have enough, enough capacity on our general dollars to pay that route. And then secondarily, if you're rebuilding a sewer plant, the taxpayers frankly shouldn't have to pay for that, the ratepayers should. So, so that's, you know, again, real quickly, those are about the four examples of the type of debt that are available to us. And that's really about it. We're not allowed to, you know, do any other risky type thing. We're just legally, we're not allowed to do so when we're dealing with the taxpayer dollars and the ratepayer dollars. So again, it's, it's, it's a limited process and we're limited to where we, where we can go. And that's a real quick, five-minute summary.
Yeah, and a few other highlights about, and the things that I about over the last 10 years. Now, we've done a number of refis where all of a sudden we have a bond that we let out for a certain city project and we've gone back and ailers have come in. And again, they are sort of the guru of, in the Midwest at least, I don't know. Are they actually nationwide, ailers?
Ah, no, mainly the Midwest.
Midwest. And they'll come in and say, and put together, now, we know interest rates were good there for a number of years. So we were able to do that, roll an old issue into a new one, save money. And every time, we were able to not only pay the cost of the new issue, but we were able to save money. So we've done that a number of times. Now, of course, interest rate's a little bit higher, so that would be, be a little bit of a, a different ballgame. But, but again, we've been able to do that. We haven't taken on a lot of short-term things since I've been there anyway. We did for a vehicle, I think a few years ago, we did a, one of the things, we took a five-year, and actually did work through a local lender at the time, and that's how we paid off and since then. The, the only other thing to touch on, specifically the debt for a TIF district, and what, and then how, how that works and where, what our situation is with ours right now.
So, so again, we talked a little bit about, so we, basically, we, with QuickTrip, we did agree with them that we would pay roughly about, I mean, again, we'll see what else said and done, but I think it was a maximum, well, we were splitting the cost of the road, the new road, to put it on Harvey Street there, for a maximum of about $150,000. So that's in the TIF district. We're going to have to borrow for, for that piece probably in early '23. And so that gets paid back through the properties that are in the TIF district, properties that are in the TIF district, and basically their increased valuation from going in the TIF district. So, you know, so basically, you know, properties that are there, Family Dollar is in, is basically a TIF increment. So basically, there was, when the TIF was created, Family Dollar wasn't there. So that's the value of Family Dollar over and above the land, part of the TIF district. The whole area, McDonald's, Shell, the hotel, those are our big ones. Some, some increases around the Co-op Elsivia area. So at this point, we've got about $5 million in increment in the TIF, which would generate us about $100,000 a year that has to go back to paying off to TIF-related items. At this point, the only thing that we have in the TIF was a state trust fund loan that we, that we did borrow 10-plus years ago, and that was refinanced last year as part of our, so again, I think the borrowing was always like 4.5%, but when we borrowed last year for the project, again, ailers recommended that we roll all of those in together. It's still segregated because it's in the TIF, but now it's about a 2.2%, you know, interest rate. So again, those TIF districts will go to, the properties in the TIF, will go, will pay the same tax rate as everyone else in the city, but those dollars specifically go to paying off that debt.
And the other thing that happened when we did that last, beyond the debt that we picked up on the new project, but we took, because of the way, we actually got rerated. The ailers, and then they have, it's a rating company that comes in, and Moody's came in and basically looked, and this is the importance of, of solid fiscal responsibility, is to make sure you're not overspending yourself, to make sure that your, your, your debt isn't too high and so on and so forth. We were lucky enough to actually get an upgrade the last time we were rerated, which obviously helped us in the long run to be able to get that money, to get those dollars a little bit cheaper for the interest rate. Because obviously, the good job that I think the people who sit in this room, the ones that have sit in this room, the staff members that have done this to make sure that we're, we're in good financial standing, so that obviously, we got about one of the highest ratings you can get for a community our size.
Exactly. And that's just, that's just the independent agency that goes in. It's Moody's and Standard and Poor's are the two. You've probably heard of them. I mean, they, they rate, you know, real wide. But municipalities, obviously, you know, Moody's has a separate section that just does, you know, you see municipalities and school districts and things of that nature. And so we were lucky enough to be very, very high, which leads to lower interest rates. Again, it's just to guarantee that, yep, we're, we're going on all them saying, they're going to be able to pay back their debt, that if you invest in this, if you buy these bonds, you will get paid back with the interest rate, you know, quoted. And so that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Any questions on that? Again, I just think it's good for people to know, and obviously, this budget time is always good to go through those things. And at any time, if there's any question about our debt, how it does, contact the city administrator, be happy to explain those things. Again, any other questions? Okay. Next, we have discussion, possible action regarding re-advertising to sell city-owned property on Austin Street. As you know, we had a couple of lots on Austin Street. We ended up, well, actually, we had three at one time technically. And then we combined one and kept so much for the city. We sold one of the other lots. And again, we said we'd let it rest for a little while, but now to discuss again about possibly putting it back out.
And so, and I can show you on the map over here, but if, y'all know where Matt lives, Matt Gillis, on Austin Street right across from Caddy, this would be the lot to the, I guess that would be the east, right? So basically, it's a about 15,000, or I'm sorry, 22,000 square foot half-acre lot that we put out for bid back in the fall of '21. As the mayor noted, the lot on the other side of Matt, we put out just a couple of months before that, that we did get a bid on and it was sold to Don and Vicky Asher at the time. But we put this one out for bid just a couple of months later, and, or actually, I think it was about a month later, we didn't receive any, any bids on that. We put a minimum bid of $15,000 on it, no bids. Since then, just basically within the past three months, I've had three different people contacting me to say, is the city ever thinking of selling that again? And so, you know, here we are, back before, if it's, at this point, when we, when we did re, basically do a certified survey map to replat that area, we did keep an outlot. Cedar helped us with that. We kept an outlot for basically, variously drainage of the water tower potential, if we ever had to drain the tower to get it to the street, into the stormwater system. So we, we did keep a lot essentially between Matt's house and his property that we put out for bid. So again, it's all, it's all re-certified.
The other side.
I'm sorry, the other, I'm sorry, the other side of, yeah. But yeah, so at this point, again, we have some people that may be interested in the property. Clearly, I think it's fair to say, we do have issues with housing in the community. We have a lot that we have no plans to use. So if the council is amenable to potentially...
And again, so the last time we did this, we did sealed bids. We put out the thing, advertised it, and then waited for someone to come in with sealed bids. Obviously, we sold one lot. There was obviously somebody who was interested in it. That's one way to do it. Technically, we could hire a real estate agent, put a sign up there, technically, put a price on it. I mean, there's, there's a number of ways of doing it. Usually, the one thing about, usually with sealed bids, it's pretty fair. I mean, if there's people interested in...
Is there a reserve on that though then?
Yeah, we did, last time Matt, it was 15.
15 is what's last time. Again, we can, we can adjust that.
The other lot was eight, was the minimum bid.
Yeah, a little smaller than that, so. So, I don't know what the council feels, should we put it back out, see if...
Our first reserve on that was 10, and then we dropped it to eight, right? Because there was no takers.
I think Travis, I think you're right on that first one, that yes, in fact, I remember. It was 10 and we dropped it to eight. And yeah, we got just a little more than that, 800 and all.
And then, the size of that, this lot is approximately an acre?
50 feet bigger.
Uh, half acre. 2.52 acres, at 22,500 square feet, about 150 square, 150 feet square.
You want it on the TV?
I don't know, unless somebody wants to see that.
Yeah. It's about a third larger than the lot that we sold prior, correct?
A little bit, yeah. The first lot was a pie shape.
Right.
It had like 200 feet of frontage, you know, 230 feet of road frontage, but only had in the back corner like 50.
Right. Yeah. Well, if you got people interested, now probably time to put it out there.
Yeah. And people can either build a single-family house on there, could somebody put a duplex on this?
It's, yeah, it's our one.
I was just going to say, it opens up the possibility.
Single family or to no more than two.
But no more than two, yeah.
Yeah.[1717.20]
But no more than two, yeah. A duplex too. Again, you're right across from the grade school, the people are very nice. Convenience, you got kids in grade school. So again, the big question is, how should we go about it? Do we want to try sealed bids again? What type of calendar are we looking at? Are you thinking if we...
Well, everything's ready, so I mean, we could, if the council, you know, approved this tonight, we could get it in the paper next week. And then we'll leave it out. I think we left it out for almost a month last time. Put it on, and just so, again, advertise it a few times and making sure, get on the website, and we put it on Facebook, just so people are aware. We put up a sign last time, so if people drive by, we know, people dropping their kids off at school, so.
Okay, so, pretty much we'll go that direction. And again, we'll get a motion here on this thing. But the question is, the reserve price. We put, 15 was the last time?
15 was the last time.
Yeah, and we did, I know, I mean, for the size, it's a decent-sized lot.
It is.
You know? So I think we gotta be pretty, you know, obviously, it's a city asset. If we're selling city assets, we gotta make, city asset, we have to make sure we're protecting the city interest. But getting it sold and getting a house on there, or a duplex or something on there would be obviously very advantageous to the city.
I think there's more people looking now, but if you want to drop it for 15, I won't go too much lower.
I mean, we could always drop it. I mean, it, just like we did last time. If the case say, not that many people are in, so the person that was interested was like, you know what, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I'm not willing at that price. So.
Start at 15, see what happens.
Yeah, we'll see.
Stay right there and go from there, yeah.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to resist the lot for, for minimum of $15,000 in sealed bids.
On sealed bids.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none? Since we're talking sales city property, I'll take a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
All five in the paper.
Motion's agreed to. Next move on to public safety, police department, Chief Bridgeway.
All right, I just have a couple of updates for you. I spoke to Isaac and Zach. There are two officers that are in the academy, and just kind of got an update for them to see how things were going. And they're finishing, starting up to, starting to get finished with their second phase, which means that they have finished some of their EVOC, which is emergency vehicle operations, their firearm stuff, done with their TASER training, their OC training. So they're done with some of the major stuff, so we're gonna start getting them working with Sergeant Shellhorn, start their training process. And they're still on schedule to graduate in December to start working regular shifts for us as well. Sam McGrane came back to us. He's a full-time officer now in Glenwood City. He was part-time, started out part-time here in Duran, went to Glenwood City full-time, and was looking to work a little bit of, some part-time hours. He doesn't want to work a lot, but enough to at least help us maybe a couple of times a month. So he started with me on Tuesday, he rode around with me on Tuesday, we got all the state paperwork done and things. So you'll see Sam back here in the community working for us. So that was good to have him back. I gotta thank John and Brandon and Matt for helping out with homecoming, along with the Puma County Sheriff's Department and Scott. Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Did you cover an intersection?
I did.
Thank you. I was going on vacation.
I lassoed you.
Sorry, Scott. But, you know, it was the day before Brandon's wedding, and he's like, I think I can come out for the parade. And I was like, don't get in trouble the day before you get married. He's like, sure. He's like, yeah, I'll be fine. So he came out, it was the day of, he came out and helped with homecoming. The Puma County Sheriff's Department helped cover some intersections, the Wisconsin State Patrol. So we had some great, some great help there in my absence to help make homecoming very smooth. And the week went off really well with the school district and all their events that they had going as well. So that was good. Sergeant Shellhorn, he's been swamped since I've been gone with not only taking over some of my duties when I was in my absence, but he's also got a couple of major cases that he's working. He was in the office again today, unfortunately, just having to do some follow-up interviews and things like that. So he's been, he's been very busy with some cases. And then he got a thank you, him and Officer Linsley. Couple weeks ago, Officer Linsley got a call asking, from another agency, asking to do a death notification. Sometimes in law enforcement, you get called when somebody's family member passes away, and then the officers have to go onto the scene to notify the family about the death. Sergeant, or Officer Linsley got the call. I was out of town, I think I was camping on the weekend. He called Sergeant Shellhorn and said, hey, this is what I got. I've never done one. John came out and went to the house with Jacob. So just basically states, I want to thank the two officers that came to my house and gave me the news of my husband's passing, especially Sergeant John Shellhorn, for his compassion, professionalism, his concern for me, getting someone to stay with me. I know it can be easy to bring news like this to a family. God bless you and all the work you do. So just want to thank Sergeant Shellhorn. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Okay. Move on to the fire department, Chief King.
The report's in front of you guys. I'll just highlight a few things. We did get awarded a $10,000 grant by the DNR last week for the purchase of a new brush truck, so we're gonna pursue that here in the next few months. And also, we did get a $1,000 donation that we'll get at the ribbon cutting for QuickTrip. And then we're gonna be hiring two more people. They'll be showing up at our October meeting, that's the Brits of Alco, Britt Polzer. So if you see, there are them two on the street, congratulate them, please. And then the calls. We had, we were very, very busy. We had 18 calls for the month. They're all listed there. That's all I got.
Any questions for Chief King? And then ambulance, Director Mueller.
Thank you. In front of you is my monthly report. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The fundraiser that was sponsored by Bodhi Saloon and Andy Pelkey of Primarily was a big success. We were given checks for over $3,000, and we are going to be putting that towards the purchase of a new Furno DCibtec Lifeline arm, which can do compressions, chest compressions on a patient that needs that. It was a busy month for us also, a total of 44 calls. And the transfer call that was missed was from Sacred Heart Hospital to the Twin Cities area, and we weren't able to provide four people total. So we kept the 911 service here in town and couldn't come up with two more for that transfer. So that's why a transfer was missed. Any questions?
39 calls has got to be one of the highest ones you've had in a while.
Well, the highest one I've ever seen.
It was a busy month. Unfortunately, there were some pretty, pretty tough calls that our staff had to go on, and along with firefighters and law enforcement and the county, so.
Mike, why are we getting these calls from other...
Hospitals?
To do transfers.
They are unable to find an ambulance within a couple hundred miles.
Really?
Yep, absolutely. And like I had mentioned before, it's probably going to get worse before it gets better. And a lot of that has to do with staffing. It just trickles down whether the staffing at the hospital can't be provided to care for that patient, so they need to transfer them to a larger hospital, or a greater level of care, or the services that do provide long-distance transfers can't staff their ambulances, and...
I was gonna say, so they're, Eau Claire, they're full-time ambulance service?
Eau Claire City does not do any long-distance transfers. The fire department does not do any long-distance transfers. The closest local in the region, I would say, that can do long-distance transfers would be Chippewa Fire Protection District and Mayo Transport, Mayo's ambulance service that they have. They do a lot of long-distance transfers. But the majority of those are from within the Mayo system. They will occasionally take a transfer for another hospital, but typically, Chippewa Fire District is the biggest provider of long-distance transports in this area. And if we aren't able to provide here at Advent, Ellsworth Ambulance is typically the first ambulance that they will request, and if they can't, then they will probably call Chippewa Fire District.
And on those transfers, you get to fully reimburse for what the charge is?
Not necessarily. With the long-distance transfers, the biggest advantage to those is we recoup almost all of our per-mile charge, and that can add up to quite a bit. Currently, we are charging $16 a mile, and we're looking to increase that to possibly as high as $26 a mile. And as I was saying, a good portion of that is recovered in the billing, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid also. But private pay, yes. If the individual has private pay insurance, there's a...
Basically, as far as the Medicare law on a standard 911 call, in this, in the transfer situation, that's still, there still could be Medicare costs involved in that, so we would be paying less, or we would be receiving less.
Yep. Especially in a case where the patient, say for example, is here in Duran at Advent, and they need a higher level of care. Something that can't be provided at the hospital here, doesn't matter if they are completely uninsured, they still need to be transferred and cared for at a hospital that will accept them and can accept them. So yes, we, in some instances, may have to, you know, eat or concur all the costs of that bill.
Well, and I think just maybe, this is where your head is rather than, we're not losing money on this deal. Otherwise, no way.
Right, right.
On the majority of the...
Oh, with the long-distance transfers.
Right, no, no, we're not voluntarily...
Like as far as the wear and tear on the vehicle, factor it all in, we're coming out of heaven.
Yes, on the long-distance transfers, absolutely.
So I think the last, that last one that we had in Madison, the bill was just over $3,000. I think we got like 1,700. And the cost, even wear and tear, it was like just under 500. So, again, $1,000 day, we'll, we'll take a lot of those in ambulance service.
306,500.
Yeah. So it's just unfortunate that it wasn't Medicare. Again, it's not, we're not asking those questions upfront of, you know, but frankly, we could.
And a big...
For transfers, again, 911, never, obviously, never.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's our time, and that's, you know, that's part of the reason some, some departments just don't, that they are so busy that, you know, and again, I can't say it enough, that we don't even consider these unless we've got a 911 ambulance fully staffed here in Duran.
There have been times where some ambulance services, say, for example, Chippewa Fire District, they can accumulate stacked transfers. They will get back from going to the Twin Cities and have another call to Madison waiting for them. So if that gets to be the case, obviously for driver's safety or for the crew's safety, they can refuse those and turn those down. So there, again, is another situation where who are they gonna call next? If Chippewa Fire District has just gone to Duluth, and then they've gone to the Twin Cities, and they don't have another new crew coming in for another eight hours. The patient needs to go somewhere, so that service is going to try, or that hospital's going to try to find the closest available ambulance service to transport that patient, to get them where they need to be. And again, remember, we can only transport patients at the basic life support, the BLS level. We can't provide IVs or medications, that type of thing, or any, any kind of critical care. I am looking into the possibility of accepting a transfer where a nurse would ride along from a facility in Eau Claire. I've already checked here at Advent, and the staff has told me there that they can't, they don't have the staffing to allow. So that is something we're also looking into in the future. But as of right now, we only take BLS transfers. And so the patient has to be relatively or very stable. And we have discussed that with all the staff members too, that they have the right, if they get to the hospital and have taken report, and they don't feel that, say for example, the patient has a fractured hip, and they want us to transport them to Madison, well, chances are, before we get to Madison, with the bumpy roads and interstate, they're gonna be in pain and want some pain medication. Well, we aren't able to do that. So if they don't feel comfortable, any of the EMTs can turn down our transfer. So it's all pretty much a case-by-case situation, and we have, we won't accept a transfer without the required paperwork. There's two, two forms that we have to have for each, each transfer. So.
Okay. Any other questions for the ambulance service? Okay, thank you. Next move on to public works utilities, engineer's report, Russ.
Yes. Good evening. Last week, on the October 3rd, I received a standard boilerplate email from the Wisconsin DOT regarding the bipartisan infrastructure lot grant application. Didn't have a community name on it, and it's the only one I received. So that told me to immediately go to the DOT website to look at the funding list for that grant funding program. Unfortunately, City of Duran did not receive funding through that large federal funding program. However, you weren't the only community. Just a little bit of information that was in my email from the DOT. If you remember, they had, DOT presented that they anticipated receiving about one, just under 1.3 billion for the next five years for this bipartisan infrastructure lot for transportation projects. And that money is separated between different pots of money, the surface transportation program, their standard program, urban and rural, those are for communities that have major collector roads. Duran doesn't have a major collector road. There was also the bridges in that pot of money, and then that newly-created, where we submitted your application under the new surface transportation local program. So in the email I received from the DOT on just that pot of money, that we submitted your application, the STP local program, they received 705 applications with an estimated cost of a project cost of 681 million. And in this round, they only, they only funded 25 million. So there were 27 projects under that STP local statewide that were funded through this past solicitation for grant money. And I think there were, of that 27, there were only six in the Northwest Region, which were part of the Northwest Region. So in that email, the DOT also stated that they're going to have another solicitation for the STP local money being available, coming out on the DOT website the end of October, November. So they're telling, urging everyone to reapply, which, kind of doesn't make sense to us. Why don't you just take the application you got? Why do we have to reapply? But...
Well, can we use all the same basic material?
Yeah, we'll just reapply, the same information. You know, you think it could be easier, but I guess not. So we'll just reapply. Then they said there's also gonna be another solicitation coming out in the spring through the regular STP program, which will have the local too. So there'll be two more rounds, or we'll have a chance to reapply for that money. What it's telling us, the DOT isn't coming out and telling anyone this, but under the bridge program, there were 76 applications. Too bad you didn't have a bridge. Every bridge project that submitted an application got funded. All 76 bridges in the state got funded. And then through the other programs, like, you know, I talked about the yours, the local program. And then they split out the regular STP rural and urban. So under the rural, there was only 35 projects funded statewide. And under the urban, they split it between population of 50,000 to 20,000, and then 20,000 to 15. So under the 5,000 to 20,000 on the regular STP urban, there was only 17 projects funded. And then under the STP urban, 20,000 to 50,000 population, there's only seven. So that tells us with what they funded through the solicitation earlier in the year, it's nowhere close to that 1.3 billion they're supposed to get from Washington. So that indicates that DOT probably jumped the gun a little bit ahead of all the other states in terms of... in terms of requesting these solicitations. And they didn't have the money allocated from Washington and the Federal Highway Department yet. So they only had so much money in their existing program, so that's why they're asking for people to reapply. And then two more new solicitations coming out. Because that money probably is going to be, is allocated now or will soon be allocated by time they rescore and review the application. So I think it's just a lag in getting the funding for federal highway and, and Washington into the state.
So the creek that goes underneath the road over here, we can't, we can't have that big bridge.
Right. It's not going to work.
Okay, just to check it all angles before we get.
So just an update, so don't be too discouraged yet. We'll see what happens with the reapplication. The other item related to that Madison Street project, the bill funding. Remember, we talked about water, water mains and sanitary sewer mains for that project. There's also bipartisan infrastructure law that's allocated to the Wisconsin DNR through the Clean Water Fund Program to be sanitary sewer systems and the safe drinking water, which would be the water main system. So we're in the process right now of completing an application for the city for that funding. And it's called, the first step for that DNR funding, it's called an intent to apply application. And it's due the end of the month, October thirty first. So we're going to take the water and sewer portion for the Madison Street project, submit an intent to apply for DNR, and that goes through a scoring and a selection. Doesn't commit you to that funding, but at least it gets you on the list, you know, for constructing that project if you do get funded through the bill program. They, because they have a lot of federal money in both of those Wisconsin DNR programs for water and sanitary sewer, they're also changing the scoring and the rules for that. They don't have, they don't call it a grant program, they call it principal forgiveness. So they have a formula that looks at your debt, looks at your water and sewer rates and everything else and your need, and then they score it. So they're relaxing some of those scoring requirements, and then also they're increasing the principal forgiveness, or the same thing as a grant through that program. In the past, just water main extension project or replacement project, sanitary sewer, never really scored real high through the intent to apply. They just didn't have the money. Most of that money went to wastewater treatment plant projects, you know, large water treatment projects, towers, wells and so forth, those always scored higher than just a street water main extension or sanitary sewer extension. But we believe with the federal money in that program, there'll be some, some of those street utility replacement projects that will receive funding. So we'll see what happens on that, through that program too. That's all I have, sorry for the bad news, but keep your fingers crossed. We'll, we'll reapply. Keep you posted.
Is there a rough timeline on, or hearing back on that water sewer portion of Madison Street?
That usually comes out in the late spring time period, midwinter, late spring. And then the actual applications are typically, if you proceed with a project, are usually due, I believe, the end of June for an application, so.
Any other questions for the city engineer? While we're talking about money in streets, I noticed that the allocations came up from the state of Wisconsin for the local roads for next year. Was that about what we were expecting?
Where should we give a little bit, little bit more than we have in the past, yeah?
Yeah, because it was a hundred and twenty five.
Yeah, it was, it was right around a hundred.
Of course, I did notice when I, I let that report off the same.
And again, we kind of knew that with the, based on how much you put into your roads. And so knowing that we had projects recently, we're kind of hopeful that we were.
Going to get, talking a little bit more.
Unfortunately, it worked out.
Okay, Public Works Utilities, September report, Superintendent Gillis.
Yes, you heard me talk about, we are in the process of a permit renewal for the wastewater treatment plant. The permit is actually not, comes due September of 2023, the end of September next year. But you have about a year's worth of, about a year and a half's worth of, of things you have to do before that. So we got all of our testing done, we got all of our paperwork submitted. Yesterday, the DNR was at the plant and did their walkthrough inspection. Basically, did a full fed, full fledged inspection of all of our paperwork, all of our records and our, and our process. So sometime here in the next fourteen days, I should get a copy of that inspection. I don't anticipate any issues with that inspection. And then we'll keep moving on with the permit renewal. I should have a copy of the proposed permit renewal sometime this spring, I'd say May, June-ish. And then I will have the latest and greatest on what they're proposing, if they're proposing any changes. I'm not aware of any everything right now, it's just an if. So they're doing their calculations. I will know if there's any changes by, like I said, May, June of next year. Then there's a, like a ninety day public hearing portion for that permit, which gives the public and us chances to refute anything that we see in there that we don't like with the new permit to start October first of 2023. So we're working on that, it's a long process. Also with the DNR, kind of coinciding with the, with the Ashbore Grant that we apply for, we are moving forward with the forestry division on a, on a operation plan. They have a program where they're going to basically come up, come into the city and do an operation plan free of cost. That operation plan will, will have tree management, tree inventory. They'll go up and down all of our streets and boulevards and parks. And, and they'll, we'll come up with an operation plan, tree management, they'll identify all the trees. We'll get kind of GPS coordinates on all the trees. And then we'll come up with a, with a plan of how to manage boulevard trees for the future. All that's free of cost, just a little legwork on my end. Couple other things, the parks are now winterized. Today, we winterized Terrance Park, and yesterday, we winterized Memorial Park. All the sprinkler systems and everything are winterized. The guys are working on other buildings now preparing for winter. And the dock should either, if it does come out tomorrow, it'll be coming out first next week. Other than that, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Any questions for Public Works Utilities? Next, we move on to the next item, preliminary view of the site plan for the proposed Dollar General project. Everybody has a copy of that in front of them, as we knew that this was probably coming down the pipe at some point. Here it is.
We're not looking for any, any sort of action here tonight, this is just for, for basically for you to look at. And so this will be brought up, basically, at plan commission. We're shooting for the week of the twenty fifth, I think. We have two items for plan commission. Site plans typically are, per code, are reviewed by, by commission. And then this would come before the council on the twenty sixth.
Double check that, that's the next meeting.
So, yeah, so here's, you know, just a rough, a little better than a rough idea of what they're looking at. Recall that we did, the only things that, that they asked for were two variances regarding the number of parking stalls and just having a single loading dock, which, again, we, we granted. So pretty close to the, you know, the final step of them proceeding with this project. You know, Matt, Matt, you've been in touch with the engineer. Minor issues or just minor, minor items that, that you touched base with them on?
Yes, just some water sewer, stormwater issues, and then just driveway entrance stuff.
As we also talked about in Public Works budget here last, last week, the twelfth Avenue is, is basically slated for, we could get a LREAP grant, right?
Yes.
Over improvement through the county. So we will be fixing that up, and that thought should help this project as well. So, so, yeah, things are, things are moving forward and, and looking good. But essentially, if you have, I guess if you're looking at this and you have any questions, you know, we can certainly pass them along to the folks at Dollar General. Otherwise, you can certainly wait. At the council meeting on the twenty sixth, we will have a representative of the engineering firm representing Dollar General via, basically Zoom, ask any questions, similar to what we had at the, at the plan commission, I'm sorry, not plan commission, variance committee, a month or so ago.
Okay, I do have a question. Okay, along Twelfth Avenue, right now, going into the parking lot that presently exists, there's no curb gutter or anything, correct? You just drive right into the parking lot?
Correct.
Is there going to be one?
We, we, we will be putting a curb in, yes, through our new road construction when we do Twelfth Avenue.
Well, is that covered by L, LREAP?
That'll be covered in that project, yes.
Both sides of the street.
Yes, we'll probably end up going past, not, probably won't go all the way to the end, but we'll be going past their driveway and, and trying to get past the driveway on the other side, I believe, and spare driveway for better drainage.
They did the same thing on the one side of Family Dollar when it came in. That street was in the same condition, didn't have curb and gutter, with curb and gutter on both sides of the street.
Are there presently, along that street, are there any storm sewer entrances? Is any student?
There's no storm sewer on Twelfth Avenue, no.
There's no storm sewer, are we going to put?
We don't have any, we don't have elevation to put storm sewer down Twelfth Avenue. The only way to, the only way to get storm sewer down Twelfth would be to come out into Prospect Street, and the storm sewer's too shallow on Prospect Street to get any type of elevation. So basically, it'll surface shed off the back like it currently does.
Down toward Hardy Street?
Correct.
And that, that parking lot's built to do that, so the water goes, or how is that?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the street water, or are you talking about the parking lot for Dollar General? The parking lot for Dollar General will have storm sewer in it. You can't see it on here right now, but they have, they have storm sewer inlet all across the, the back of the building, the side of the building, the front of the building. And then they are able, if you see down here in this corner, Prospect Street, between Dollar General and the Family Dollar, you see that little indentation right there?
Yep.
They're actually tied, they are actually able to tie into the Prospect Street storm sewer. They have enough elevation, they have storm sewer all the way around the building. And then they'll have a, a little filtration to remove suspended solids in this corner. And then they're able to tie into the storm sewer in Prospect Street. So all of the water on the DG site will be encapsulated in a storm sewer and go out to the existing storm sewer. On Twelfth Avenue, when we do road construction, we do not have the luxury, that elevation to put storm sewer on the road. So we will be surface shedding our road only off the backside.
Okay, yeah, because in my mind, I was saying, if it's all going, that seems to be locked. That, that would, we wouldn't want that.
The only thing going off the, the backside would just be Twelfth Avenue only.
For Twelfth Avenue, okay.
And then probably, you know, a, a eight, ten foot driveway approach, you know, that always kind of has to slope out towards the road, because we can't allow our water from our road onto their property.
Do you know roughly what the distance would be between the two buildings?
Well, there's a setback off the property line that they are meeting.
Yeah, I can't, I'm looking for numbers, looks like so five.
I have in my.
It's on the far left.
Yeah, I can't, can't read that.
It says side, ten foot.
Ten foot one and a half, okay. That's what I would assume.
Nobody's breaking out the magnifying glass.
Let me do those sheets that tend to be printed at eleven by seventeen. Makes it all easier to read.
So originally, it sounded like they were going to try to have this done by like December, that year.
Oh, I don't, I don't think that was ever there.
Oh, was it? I thought initially, I thought.
Breaking ground, they want to break ground.
Yeah. They were, I think they were so thoughtful, they were starting with something, but.
Five to the property line and then probably.
The property line to the buildings, five feet, which is our.
A little more coy on our side setback. Now that we're moving to the preliminary, that'll be a question we have for them.
Yeah, what's, what's the target date for our work?
Our target date is after the, after them. So we have to have, in order to qualify for our grant, we have to just be done in fiscal year 2023. So if, if they can get all of their work done, and we can get in there August, you know, July, August, September, and they kind of assured me that that shouldn't be.
Can you guys do that work yourself?
We will probably have to contract some of that out. Like we'll be able to do some like blacktop removal, but I can't, I don't have the equipment to do subcutting. And we'll try and haul some gravel in, and we'll, we'll end up probably working with the highway department. But we will have to actually put like blacktoping out for bid, so we'll have to collect a bid on blacktoping. We'll have to collect a bid on some of the work that we don't do. So there will be opportunities for other companies to bid on it.
Okay, any other questions? As I said, this will be coming back for an official vote after it goes through plan commission. And coming back our direction here at the next meeting. If there's any questions in the meantime, feel free to contact Matt as far as the site or anything else about the schedule, this city administrator. Okay, again, anything else on that? Any other questions on that? Okay, there we go, let's pay the bills. Just a reminder, upcoming meetings. As we said, the Finance Committee will be meeting at five o'clock on the twenty fourth. And we get this, the budget situation, and then, of course, full council on the, on the twenty sixth. Any other committee meetings needing to be planned at this point? Of course, we also just sort of, I get that, but.
Plan, plan commission coming up.
Plan commission, yeah.
Doesn't affect any.
All the time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right.
Let's try to see it.
One more time on the report, okay.
She's that.
Trips off for luncheon. Get the grandkids off, but they just.
Paul's new mystery in the airport. All the sleep mystery in the airport.
I didn't realize that was a mystery.
Neither did I.
He just said, "Oh, it's the mission from the end of the year."
Think maybe there should be some benefits coming along with it.
Well, I think that's bad, didn't it?
And you make a lot of people to expand projects, extra money if they got it, or shorter. See what that would be.
He just did one, one, uh, pad for the bench, Donna, assuming this one, that's how it was.
Yeah, one pad for us. They paid for a little bit.
I don't have the back.
Two.
Yes.
I don't have the back.
Yeah.
I don't mind.
I knew Matt would get him.
That was a drawdown here again.
Yeah, what's start for the future?
You'll have to use that.
What kind of boot were you getting from, uh, Ryan's down there?
We take it out.
We should really come and review these.
It's been a hundred or 20 bucks. Hydro.
We buy, we buy all our guys like boots for clean sewers and like planning events.
Does everybody get home at 10 o'clock or?
And family has one.
They're certainly available.
I know, I know.
So that would have been our.
The red thrift market.
We got more.
Was just for Scott.
We wanted, we wanted Mark to do it.
And the fish scale. The way our cash can be.
Did we prove final copy for the summer projects going, going to do proof of copy?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 that is not a plan.
You haven't seen the.
No.
Yeah.
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 Are we getting a new one?
You can pass the.
What's that?
You can pass.
I don't want to be.
Yeah.
You get that.
He probably won't get that detail, but it's all.
From what I understood when I talked to him, it would be like an African.
That's why.
Yeah.
Temporal.
Yeah.
Be that for local.
You want a free drawing of something that you change.
And that's where.
With all the.
I will just three months. I get it, but I just want to get that.
Amazon hired Marshawn Lynch to be their reporter on Thursday nights. Their broadcasting.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They're covering.
That, that was awful. We're sitting here last night.
I, I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
I can't imagine it was that good.
They, I mean, talk about they were, oh, it's open. I mean, it was, it was like free for all.
That's what you get in the land.
I don't think it was.
True.
Okay, how are we going to show our debt on the general years?
I was one off.
I've seen this before. Super Bowl, the same thing.
Sure, it's tough for him the whole time.
They have no hope to do that.
I've got my calendar, so I'm going to do it tomorrow.
This is a yearly, one, two, isn't it?
But, uh.
Two touches next.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Celebration.
About the.
Very game.
If you got fishing, or I think a fishing story, you can exaggerate a little bit, don't bring it.
Right. Semi. So finance on the 24th.
Yeah. And then plan commission, which is.
I'm on finance too.
They're just going to be solo.
We're doing both on the 24th?
Um, no.
What, what were you doing, plan commission?
Um, well, I guess I suppose plan, because the options were the 24th and the 25th. Or we could do it before the council. So it's, you know, like, like, actually, you're talking about getting.
Plus, yeah, let's get a core. Yeah, let's get a core versus.
Yeah, we don't need.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion concerning the vouchers?
I'll make a motion, approve the, uh, approve vouchers.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve the vouchers. Roll call please.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Waisaak.
Yes.
All five in favor.
Are there any other future issues or agenda items? And if not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.